And so we will call the meeting of the city council, the city of Hillsborough to order. We will, next item up is the approval of minutes from our two sixteen, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Did everyone receive a copy of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Gearing seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll now move on to agenda item C, approval of vouchers. Today we have manual checks in the amount of seventy-six thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars thirty-six cents. Computer checks in the amount of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars sixty-seven cents. For a total voucher approval of one hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars three cents. Did everybody receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
Moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
All those opposed, motion carries. We'll now move on to agenda item D, public comments. Mr. Styles, do we have any members of the public?
We do not appear to have anybody from the public with us today. Just our friends at the press and Laura Paulus is here, joining us back.
Welcome back Laura.
She's on mute.
She's on mute.
That's okay. That's okay. She, hopefully she heard us and we're glad that you're back. It was good to see you at the ballgame the other night and just all our best wishes for your continued recovery.
Thank you guys. I missed you.
We missed you as well, so welcome back. Alright, hearing no public comment, we will now move on to our business section. And we will move to a public hearing for grant performance, CDBG dash CV, Mr. Styles.
Well, I would turn it over to Rosemary from Ranson and she can walk us through this. Rosemary?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is the last part of the COVID grant. That the city has received last year when you applied for funding. As published in the newspaper on February the seventeenth, we told the public that the city initially had applied for three hundred thousand dollars to assist economic development grants to, to small businesses that were impacted by COVID. When the state ended up doing their awards, the city received a hundred and thirty-two thousand in total. A hundred and twenty-two thousand of that went to, to businesses here in, in the city. Six businesses received fifteen thousand each. Two businesses received ten thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents each. In one business received ten thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents to even out the hundred and twenty-two thousand. Were able to retain twelve full-time jobs and eleven part-time jobs with, with these funds. And so at this point, we open for comments on, on the project. Positive or negative, is this is time for citizen participation? At the end of the comment period, the mayor will close the public hearing and will ask for council consideration to sign the, the final closeout documents and to submit to CDBG, so.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you.
Are there any comments? From the council? I guess I would just like to say then that if we look at the list of, of businesses that were assisted, these are all homegrown businesses that were started here in Hillsborough and some of them are relatively new. We have a variety of service and food service and, and recreation and, and and manufactured products are all in the mix. And so I think, I, I would just like to say I'm very thankful that we received this funding from the state and that I appreciate Ranson's job in helping us administer these grants. There is a ton, ton, ton of paperwork that's associated and we appreciate your expertise.
Thank you.
In that area.
We couldn't have done it with also the help of city staff.
Well, that's great. The, so if there are no other comments, I'm thankful that, that we've been able to distribute this money to, to deserving businesses and look forward to them continuing to operate as we come out of this COVID pandemic, so. Any other comments? Hearing none, I will close the meet, the public hearing and turn it back over to you, Rosemary.
As I stated, is, would like there to be a motion on, on the books giving the mayor and city clerk authority to sign the closeout documents and to submit to CDBG.
Okay, would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Lowen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you again very much and I will sign the documents. Right here.
Yes, sir.
And here.
Yes, sir. And there. And then right above where Jan's. Thank you very much, sir.
You.
And as I told you, I'm going to be submitting this via email tomorrow. And I will copy the city on, on, so you, the email, so you know that it's been submitted.
Excellent. Thank you again.
Thank you.
You guys have a safe evening.
You too. Have a good evening.
Okay, we'll now move on to agenda item E two, which is our annual gap waiver. In this case, it'll be resolution two zero two one dash oh one, which is our generally accepted accounting principles waiver, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is something that we do every year for the auditors. We, we use our home rule authority to, to go out from the generally accepted accounting principles, which don't really have a lot of applicability for small communities. So what it does is that some of the cash basis laws that are state laws and the budget basis laws that we have to work under, they don't really, if you were to use generally accepted accounting principles, it would create some issues with how that gets reported, so. Every year the, the auditors ask us to do this waiver so that they can do it according to how most communities, most municipalities do their auditing, so it's a pretty standard thing. Something I could say we do every year, so we wanted to get it on the books before the audit began, which we're submitting documents now, but we really don't get going until probably April.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Styles? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one gap waiver and authorize the mayor to sign.
Moved.
Second. Councilman Driggers moves. Councilman McCarty, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman Gearing?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one is approved. Thank you. We will now move on to our second resolution, which is resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero two, emergency declaration. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So this is with regard to the, the severe extreme cold weather that we had in February. We've seen some issues where natural gas prices spiked and you know, we've tried to keep you all aware of the situation with the Kansas Power Pool and the Southwest Power Pool and sort of the rolling blackout situation or potential for rolling blackouts. Thankfully, we didn't have any of those issues here in Hillsborough, but what this does is allows us to sign on to the emergency declaration that the county has done and then how the state has also done, so. It really puts us in line for any kind of potential funding that could be coming down the line to help with citizens' utility bills. As of right now, I think from anyone who has Atmos probably found out that it wasn't a, a large jump in the, in the last billing cycle, but that doesn't mean that those, those bills are going to jump further. So we're, we're trying to find as many avenues as we can for our customers from the utility side. And from the electrical side, we actually, we receive our power from Kansas Power Pool and we won't get our bill until the eighteenth of March, and so we're not real sure what the, what the impact is going to be at this point. We have some things as members of the Kansas Power Pool, we have access to a rate stabilization fund and well, I think the board is going to consider at that meeting utilizing that fund and Luke and can, if you have any insights to that, lose on the board, so I don't know.
Well, the KPP, as it was established and the previous boards had the foresight to put a rainy day fund or a rate stabilization fund in place. And they have, they have some, they have some substantial funds in that, you know, invested in that. And so the board is going to meet on the eighteenth and will determine at that meeting what, if any of those funds will be utilized based on the actual costs incurred by the KPP. The, the, the good news for, you know, that offsets some, a lot of the bad news is the KPP is, is also a power generator. And so all the power that was generated during that time received this, the same high return that anybody else that was generating power received during that time, so. There will be some offset. We're just not sure at this time what that looks like, because we won't, when I say we, the Kansas Power Pool will not receive all of their bills until the twelfth of this month. So between the twelfth and the eighteenth, it will be determined, you know, what the effect is and how we need as a board to address that. And then based on the outcome of that relative to the bills that will come then to the city of Hillsborough, the, we may, may need to have a special council meeting to adjust or make adjustments or address that issue in some way, so that we are protecting the citizens of Hillsborough from catastrophic bills. Not that we're anticipating that, but we want to be prepared and we want to make sure we're doing the right thing. So we may ask the, the council to meet that following Tuesday, following the board meeting on the eighteenth to, to address that issue. So hopefully we will be able to have a quorum at that time to, to talk about that, if it's, if in fact it's necessary. You know, the hope is obviously that it's not necessary to do that, but we need to be prepared if, if that's the case.
Yeah, and so I think the important thing to remember for, for the public on this is that we, we're not anticipating any large bills, at least from the city side. We don't know what it looks like long-term and so we may have to make some rate adjustments in order to compensate or to correct for some of these larger bills now, but that'll be something that we'll have to have a, a pretty vigorous public conversation about when that time comes. We also, so I submitted some testimony today for a House Bill twenty-four twenty-nine, which is a bill that's being rushed through the, the Kansas Legislature that would allow for public utilities to have access to long, ten-year loans, low-interest loans to help if they have to borrow some money to help cover these costs in the immediate future. The immediate cost, that, that, that's a, a potential option too. So we submitted testimony today through KMU supporting that. We'll see where it goes, but you know, right now we're not anticipating anything, but we don't know what that looks like long-term.
Very good. Are there any questions for, from the council regarding resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero two? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero two emergency declaration and authorize the mayor to sign.
I got a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Councilman Gearing?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move on to agenda item E four, KDOT clip, C-clip fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four application. And we have in attendance Mr. Darren Newfeld from EBH Engineering. Mr. Newfeld?
Move up here when they all see me too, I guess.
There you go.
Okay, and I'm assuming that got sent out to them?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Okay, so it's that time of year again when KDOT says we can submit for potential projects and of course this has to be on the highway, that's how we get, this is the project, how we've gotten Adam Street, the industrial street, turn lanes. So I met with Dale and we talked over and we, the next best thing we could think of was to try to get some money to fix Elm Sonic and that pavement is coming off the highway that's basically falling apart. So this application, it has actually got three things in it. It's that same spot where we're going to fix the concrete that's out there, but then we're also going to lobby to add a deceleration lane, like we've done at Adams. Well, Adams didn't have a good one. But the industrial park and then also Ash Street has the deceleration lane, so especially coming over the top of that hill. Line of sight's not great, especially for the speed limit, so. We, we're lobbying to add the deceleration lane, replace the concrete that's out there. And then while we were at it, we said, we know the city's never had to touch this, but since this is KDOT money we can get our hands on to do this, replace that center island patch that KDOT put at Ash. Between the two lanes coming in off the highway, there's a long elongated stretching there, it's only about nine feet wide. It used to be a raised center island, KDOT took the raised out and then flushed it, but they didn't do a good job, so it's constantly having to be patched. So we thought, well, maybe they will spend their own money to get that fixed if we lobby for it, so. So that's the three areas we've put in for on this particular application. This is a ninety-five-five, like similar to the other projects. So, yeah, that's the, so the spot in blue on this.
Yeah, let me, let me share that real quick then.
Okay. So the area in blue is, is the pavement that's already there. So that, that pavement is what we will be replacing and then the area in red is pavement we would add onto the shoulder to get that deceleration line. So you see we go clear back, we don't clear back to that residential and we also stay inside the city limits. Because the city limits is right there, that tree row that's on down to the south. So we are staying one hundred percent inside the city limits for the project. So, and then the turn lane, this, that's that center island turn lane there on Ash that it's just, you know, chunks of concrete keep coming out, KDOT patches it, but figure if they're willing to steal money from themselves to fix it, maybe we can help persuade them to do that. So that's, that's the gist of the project. Like I said, ninety-five-five, we got pictures in there to show, yeah, the condition.
It's not great.
Yeah, it's lovely.
Is there any talk of, of looking at Adam Street finishing that?
Adding a decel lane?
No, just a, just a street in town.
Oh, in town?
Yeah.
We haven't discussed that yet at all. It's on the next, you know, when we did the last project.
Yeah.
That was the one right below the cutoff.
Yeah.
And it would have made the cut, except Larry said, no, you're not going to do the street I live on.
That's right, because he didn't want to get in trouble.
Exactly.
Don't want to get in trouble with that.
So that.
So now Larry's not here anymore, so.
So we have, we have two blocks. We have two blocks on Adams.
Yeah.
That still needs to be replaced.
Kind of lead into our high school there, yeah.
So the cost on this, like I said, the local match is going to be the twenty-six thousand on this application. Everything else is funded ninety-five percent. We have no right-of-way acquisition. We have no utilities, so neither one of those are, are a, a factor here. So that's what we'd like to turn in this application for.
Are there any questions for Mr. Newfeld?
So this is in the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four.
Right, with a geometric improvement. So there's, there's three levels of C-clip applications. There's what they call surface preservation, which is a milling overlay. There's what they call a pavement restoration, which is if we were just going to do that area in blue I talked about, this would qualify for a pavement restoration. But since we're going to do additional surfacing, we have to go for that third level called geometric improvements.
Okay.
Because of the timeframe to get stuff through the KDOT design process, as we all know and love, the odds are that a surface preservation, the milling overlay, they'll shove all those into FY twenty-three. The surface preserve, or the pavement restorations can be split, depends on how complex of a project it is. Some of those might fall in twenty-three, some might go FY twenty-four. All the GIs will go to FY twenty-four, the ones they award. So this, for all intents purposes, this will be in FY twenty-four.
This is a three-year, three years from now kind of probably.
Construction would be three years from now.
Any other questions?
Darren, do we run any risk with adding the, the decel lane of them not approving the, the, what you have in blue, the existing?
What, and the reason, a good question, Brent. The reason that I went ahead and did it and like to turn it in that way, these projects get a site visit. And at that site visit will be the area engineer, district engineer, district representative. And if they speak up at that time and say, hey, or the rep from Topeka, says, hey, there's no way we'll fund you that decel lane, they will give us the opportunity after that meeting to do a revised submission and pull the red out.
Okay.
If, if you as a community so chose to do that.
Okay.
If you remember in past years, we'd lobbied for, for some more work at Santa Fe with this program and this money. The staff at area, district and Topeka have not changed. And we knew that for the last couple of years, they haven't looked favorably at that location. So we thought it was in the best interest not to try to revisit that at this point, maybe lay off of that for a year. Go do something else.
What is the, remind me, what was the reasoning why they didn't want to look at Santa Fe?
Because they don't feel it's warranted.
So it's going to take an accident with a truck to become warranted?
Well, we've already had one of those.
Yeah.
I mean, it was what, seven, eight years ago now, but I mean, we've had a fatality with a slow-moving truck at that intersection. And I don't know, you know, it's not that the traffic, and basically, at this point, I think the only way is if we lobby them to do a full-blown traffic study. And then the key is getting them to pay for that. So that's the only way that we could potentially really have some meat behind a warrant.
So I guess what's going through my mind is, you know, with, with the plans that Countryside has brought up, there, we'd have even more trucks on Santa Fe. And that's all great for Hillsborough business, but makes that even more of a dicey intersection.
I think between what Countryside is looking at adding, what Barkman has added and what you have added in this, say, last five or six years, which is the last time KDOT really looked at it for numbers, I think that it would warrant it now. But in a way, I almost want to see Countryside get theirs, you know, that higher number rolling in to prove that on, on a traffic study. Okay, so once again, I think maybe a year from now is the better timeframe to go back and revisit that.
Okay.
Not that I want anything bad to happen in the meantime, trust me, but.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve submitting KDOT C-clip FY twenty-three dash twenty-four application as provided by EBH Engineering for the projects identified.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Gearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Application will be approved and the mayor will sign.
You don't need to sign.
I don't need to.
They've changed it and it's now fully electronic.
Nice.
But, so you don't have to worry about signing anymore. So I would like to bring up a question that he brought up, Ms. Lowen, about the other potential projects in town. KDOT did start the, the cost share program a year ago, year and a half ago. That pro, that whole program was set up to do local city streets.
Okay.
Versus, so you know, we've, we got Peabody's funded to do around their school in the, in the last round, and so that's a potential that, and that application process is due now. They just came out with it the other day and it's going to be due in April. So if, and it's a ninety-ten match, minimum ten, the ones that we've seen get funded over the last couple of cycles, if you kick in another five percent or ten percent, seems, you know, they float a little higher. So that would be something we could look at for those two blocks of Adams. And if there's anything else, it's really, you know, that last, you know, that, that next need. We can't make those projects too big because they are trying to spread the money out. So, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe four hundred thousand max type thing. But, you know, that could get us four or five blocks of street. So thought for this next month, if that was something that would be of interest, we could sure throw that one together too and have it ready to go by April.
Okay. I think that, I think there's some merit there. We need to look at it, but we have to be, we have to keep in mind, even though it's, it's, you know, a fifteen, maybe a twenty percent share, you know, if we want it to rise to the top, we still need to make sure that that fits within our debt.
Exactly, and that's.
That's the other piece of it.
Basically, what I could do, I, I would throw together some almost block by block cost estimates so, and get them to Matt, so Matt could take a look and see what that budgetary number was to see if and how you can make it fit.
I think that would be warranted and I'd appreciate it if you would do that.
And I'll get with Dale and Matt to decide exactly if there's any other street we want to throw onto.
We've got.
I know there's more.
Yeah.
I know that's, I know as you asked, that was the next street that was right below the funding line.
I have, I have one that, that, you know, if we're talking a short, and I don't know if this is short, but you know, we've got, we've got the issues of getting off of, of Santa Fe, but you know, I want to, you know, I'm not sure just what the condition of Santa Fe is right now as well. We ought to probably be taking a look at that and, and or even that connector off of industrial to Santa Fe.
Commercial back into the bottom end of Santa Fe.
That, that would maybe warrant a look as well.
That would probably be one between the business activity and increase, I think, and then the other one being on schools, I think those could be some that I would think KDOT would look fairly highly at, so.
You know, we would, that'd be something, you know, on the commercial side, we'd probably want to keep heavy truck traffic off of. But for workers going in and out of the, their places of employment, that might be a safer way in and out for the employees going to work out there in the industrial park. So I think it's worth, worth a look as well, but that stretch of Adams and, and those couple things, I think let's, let's take a look at those.
When, when's your next meeting, but just.
Two weeks.
I couldn't remember if this was a, there's a three-week cycle coming in here or not.
Yes.
That's right, because this is for, okay, so.
Yeah.
Your next will be three weeks, right?
There was three weeks.
Okay, I'll try, we'll try to have some initial stuff to you before the next meeting in case, but then probably come back in that first one in April, because that'd be right ahead of the application. Cause that'd be right ahead of the application.
That'd be great. Thank you, Darren.
Right. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're now on to business item E five and, uh. We talked earlier about, uh, about a special meeting, you know, relative to, uh, to utilities. But, uh, Mr. Styles, uh, I will turn this over to you. This is something entirely different.
Yeah. Uh, so what we would talk about here is, uh, we've talked about going back to our strategic planning and getting that finished up. Um, so we looked at the calendar. I spoke with Max Heinrichs, so the superintendent today and asked him what his schedule looked like and. Uh, as Darren mentioned just a second ago, we actually have a, a little bit of, uh, three week block between meetings in March. So. Uh, what we found was March twenty third would be a pretty good day. I know Tuesdays generally work pretty well for this group. So. Um, the twenty third at four PM is a, is a time that we would want to set for a work session. Uh, to finish out the strategic plan or revisit it anyway, and, and kind of get to work on finishing it out. Um, I think it's a, is a project that needs to be finished and needs to get, uh, get into motion. So. Um, thoughts on that date and time? And if that, that works for everybody.
Would that, council?
Would that be available via Zoom if needed?
Yeah, we can do it via Zoom.
I mean, just if needed.
Yes.
For sure.
Should work. Brent?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Barney? Okay. So.
Yeah, you'll have to do a formal, a formal motion to set a workshop for March twenty third at four PM.
Would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We will now move on to agenda item E six, which is award of concrete crushing bids. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we put out bids for concrete crushing a couple of weeks ago and we had, we actually had them for the last meeting, but we wanted to verify. That the low bidder would actually be able to do the work. Uh, A, A P M was the low bidder. Uh, they actually won a bid to do a lot of crushing for the county, Marion County recently. Uh, and so we went and verified that the, the magnets that they have are in place and their process would actually take the metal out. That was the big issue. Whether or not they would be able to take the metal out of the concrete, um, cause we really can't use it for a lot of things if it has, has rebar or things in it. So. Uh, we verified that and so Dale was comfortable with making, going forward with that and he felt that their work would be done good. Uh, he also, we, we've kind of come to terms with the idea that we can sell approximately four thousand tons of it. Uh, tons of material. Dale's kind of got a, a schedule and a method set up that I, I think will work pretty well and not be too taxing on us. Um, so what we would do is pay for this out of the special highway fund. And then if we do end up selling anything, we would put it back in there. So. Um, we would look to award the, the concrete crushing bid at sixty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars to A P M.
I see Mr. Dahlke's on the, on the.
Oh, yes. Dale is here. I don't know. Dale, do you have anything to add there? I'm not sure if, I think Dale, I don't know if his microphone works. He may not, may not have a microphone.
Okay.
I don't know.
That's fine. All right. Are there any questions for, uh, Mr. Styles then?
Dale just texted me, said, no mic.
Okay. All right. Hearing none, uh, I'd accept a motion to, uh, to approve awarding. A P M, the concrete crushing bid at amount of sixty thousand dollars for sixty thousand. Four hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Gearing moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion approved. The bid is awarded to A P M. We'll now move on to agenda item E seven. Health insurance proposal from Freedom Claims Management, Inc. Mr. Styles.
Yes, sir. So what we have here is a proposal for something called, uh, Freedom Choice, which is a partially self insured plan. Uh, through a company called Freedom Claims Management out of Great Bend. Um, how the plan works is, uh, the city basically buys an umbrella coverage like through Blue, Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Um, and then it runs a, its own self-funded plan underneath that using, uh, savings. The difference between what we would be paying Blue Cross for the current plan and what we'd be paying them for the, the less expensive high deductible plan. We take that money and, and we run our own and administer our own health insurance underneath of that. Um, so the result is that we control the insurance benefits a little bit more. Um, the plan would be to mirror the benefits that, that people have now. Um, and so employees wouldn't, wouldn't see a change in their benefits at all. Uh, we'd be able to contain the cost a little bit there, um, and they wouldn't see any change in how they pay. Um, it would, we would keep everything the same. And then, um, you know, what we would do is take that savings, which we estimated about seventy, uh, seventy seven thousand dollars a year. Um, and we would run our own health insurance plan underneath that. Um, the, the big thing for employees is that everything remains the same. They have the same networks. They have the same doctors. The only change is now that they would have a second insurance card. Uh, they're basically dual insured. So the city ensures them and then Blue Cross ensures them. Uh, but they get to go to the same networks, the same benefits, everything remains the same. Uh, we just take back some of that money that we would be paying Blue Cross, uh, to administer their plan like we have now. And then we, we're running our own plan. So. It's a little bit complicated, but, uh, we've done it. I, I did it successfully in South Hutchinson. I'm pretty confident that it works. Uh, CSI actually has the same plan. Uh, they do the same thing. And I don't know if Brent has. What Brent's experience has been with it, but, um, they do the same thing.
I'd say it's overall positive. I think the only, oh, probably the biggest thing I hear is people have to get used to the two cards. Of, of doing that and how they explain it to the, uh, to the hospitals and, and doctors, but. I think most of the private doctors and hospitals around here now have experience with it. So I don't think it's as hard. But that's the, the self-insuring portion of it, I think works well, like what Matt was describing. Of, uh, you have some ability to, you know, like if next, next cycle, they come in and the insurance is way higher. You can offset that with how we do it with, with the self-insurance side of it.
Yeah. So it, it works, it has worked pretty well. And, you know, you do take on some risk. That is a piece of it that the city does have to take on. Um, you know, they, they have actuarial projections as to what you would expect. Um, people to get and they, they anticipated that we would have four people max out their benefits. Uh, in order for us to lose money, we would have to be, have twenty two of the, of the fifty six people. In our plan max out, which is pretty unlikely. I mean, if, if we have that problem, then we have other problems going on. Um, so it's, it's a situation where there is some risk, but I feel like it's, it's pretty manageable, pretty moderate. Um, our, our plan will be changing with all the retirements and changes in personnel too. So. Um, theoretically, we'll, we'll get a little younger potentially. Um, hard to say. We don't know for sure, but. Uh, as we kind of transition, they'll, they'll actually take and bid this out and. Uh, everything now is age rated. So every insurance policy that you get is based on your age and kind of health conditions and things. So. Uh, it's a little bit different environment than, than it has been in the past, but. Uh, overall, I feel like this is a be a, a pretty good transition for us. Uh, one thing we, we will be able to do for sure is, is cancel our relationship with Hub International, which is our current broker. Uh, we pay them six thousand dollars, uh, a year to just basically get the quotes and organize everything for us. Um, that is included with Freedom Claims Management. So right off the top, we save six thousand dollars by, by just changing that relationship. So. Um, I think it's a, it, it is a little bit complicated. I will admit it does look a little bit complicated even in the proposal, but. Uh, I, I feel pretty confident that we can keep benefits. Good or as, as they are now and for probably better because we've talked about adding a few things. Uh, they're less expensive, um, like a telephone doc service where you can phone in if it's, you know. Late night or it's on the weekend and you can't get in, there's no copay. It's a, it's a nice service. We used to have that in the city of South Hutchinson. Pretty inexpensive. It's a benefit that we could add for no cost to the employee here. So. Um, then there, we have the opportunity to, to actually make the benefits better and contain our costs. So. Um, I've, I've seen it work. I know that it works pretty well and, uh, I would recommend that we move, move to this, this plan.
Can you speak a little bit to the different choices that, that, that I believe they're showing here?
Yeah, they've got, uh. So on the, let's see, on the first page of the proposal after the cover page, they, they kind of just grabbed some rates for. What we currently pay now, which is the first column, and then they've, they've got different, uh. Different plan rates depending on how the deductible goes. And so they were looking at the, uh, seven thousand. Individual deductible, fourteen thousand family. That's the high deductible plan. And then the city's plan would go underneath of that and pay. What the employee pays is fifteen hundred now, and they would, we would be insuring from that fifteen hundred up to that seven thousand amount. Um, so that's kind of how that works.
Now, when we insure that amount.
Mm-hmm.
Is there money set aside into something for that, like an insurance company would do?
Right.
And then, and then I have a question. Is, does that money then roll over to the next year if there's extra?
Yes.
So we can build that account?
So what we would do is we would basically, we, if you look at the first column there, our monthly premium is thirty thousand dollars. Uh, we would continue to pay that same amount. So it basically the, the insurance wouldn't change this year. Um, and the difference between the, the Blue Cross, which is twenty two thousand, five hundred and sixty one, that difference we put into. An account here locally. And that's what we pay claims out of. So.
Right.
We net that back. That's our money. Um, you know, as it builds up, it continues to build up and it goes.
As long as we don't rob it.
As long as you don't take money out of it, that would be the temptation. But yeah. As long as you don't take money out of it, it will build up.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think you kind of. To me, what I think I see is with the costs of insurance continually rising, you're kind of, that, there isn't really much. Ability to take out of that because you're constantly having to adjust that with, uh. Keeping the employee benefits to as high standard as you can while keeping costs low for the employee.
Right. Yeah, but that, that's exactly right, Brent. I mean, you have.
Like, let's, let's just say you build it to a hundred and fifty or so, and then you're just trying to maintain it after that. You're really not trying to build it continually up.
Right. Right. Yeah, there's no need for you to build it past a certain level because you've only got so much liability, but.
And that's when the savings come and kick in.
That's when you really start to realize it. Yeah.
Well, and I think a lot of times what you're able to do is keep your benefits high by keeping the cost of the employee safe relative or the same. And you're, so each year you're going to have to play with that a little bit of, of how much do you, um, let your. Premiums rise versus to the employee versus hold it steady and, and maybe not have any growth in that, in that, uh, buffer.
Exactly right. But when you have, when you have that fund, you have a lot, a lot more flexibility to do that than what we do now.
Yeah. So right now you could have a fifteen percent increase to your employee and there's not a lot you can do about it. With this, you could spread that out over a couple of years or something like that.
Right. 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 The goal is always to keep benefits. We have good benefits and we want to keep that good. Uh, those, those is the best we can. Because that's a huge selling point, especially when we're going out hiring people. Um, it's really important that we have competitive benefits and this is one way we can make sure that we have some control over that.
Are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Um, I'd accept a motion to, um, approve the health insurance. Proposal from Freedom Claims Management, Inc. And allow. City Administrator Styles to proceed forward in, uh, in working with them for our new benefit, employee benefit package. Somebody care to make that motion?
I moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Styles, uh, we're now on to agenda item E eight, letting mowing bids.
Thank you, sir. So one of the things we're looking at about reducing costs again and saving manpower, well, hopefully reducing costs and doing a little bit more contract mowing. Um, so what we've done is we've identified eighty five acres of, of mowing. We felt like we could, uh, do with contractors. Uh, the idea there is that we could free up some of the street department and the, uh, rec, rec department from, from doing that mowing so that they can. Do other things. Uh, so particularly when we looked at the golf superintendent, um. Filling that position, Gary does a lot of mowing at the sports complex. So. Uh, what we were able to do is kind of rearrange the mowing duties with having a contractor doing part of it. And Doug can come over and do what Gary has been doing. And then the new person won't have to worry so much about. Doing mowing outside of the golf course. Um, that was kind of the thought process behind that piece, but also we, we've got some, you know, some street projects we'd like to tackle. And we need all the hands we can on those. And, um, a lot of times the street guys are out mowing. So. Uh, if we can lessen some of that, we, we feel like we can get a lot more done with the, uh, on the street side. So what we've got is we, we broke it down for you and I didn't have good pictures, but I do have pictures now. Um, so we can kind of show you what we've got broken in there. Uh, I'll share my screen. So this is, this is kind of the first place. This is Hillsborough Heights. Here's highway fifty six. Uh, we've identified, uh, some acreage there that we felt like we could do with, uh, contractor. Um, and what Dale has done here is taken and broken these down by classes. And so what that means is that, uh, different classes have different regulations as far as how high they need to be. Uh, what the trimming level is and kind of the profile for each of those. So. Like a class four, for example, like around that pond, uh, they, they would have to keep it between three to seven inches. Uh, trimming is, is every other mowing. So whatever that ends up being, they don't have to trim it that much. Um, and we got classes one through six. One being, uh, irrigated residential area, high profile stuff like Scheffler House is a good example of that, that, uh, we would, you know, mow out. We've got a contractor for that. So we wouldn't necessarily, uh, change. We really like that contractor. Uh, class two is irrigated by the sports fields is kind of what that is. So three to five inches, uh. Little less on the trimming. Then class three through six is dry land, um, going from. More residential areas where we have to trim, cut more often all the way out to class six, which is something we mow basically twice a year. Um, so this is the class four stuff out in Hillsborough Heights. We would group that together. That would be one of its own. So we, we talked about splitting these up into more manageable chunks. So that more people would have access to bidding on these. Um, you know, one contractor could come in and bid on all of them, but. Uh, we felt like these were kind of manageable chunks. So this is, this is a chunk one. I'm getting my numbers up here. Move that around. Sorry, guys. Uh, so that's the first one. And then we look at two, which is the AMPI property. It's, uh, right here on the corner, going on Ash Street. And around the corner there on, uh, south of Midway. And then the, all the stuff that is around here and in this area where the new fire station and. Uh, the U S station will go. So that was the second one. The third one, uh, we, we do mow city hall bin, mows the city hall stuff, but, uh, the old post office building, while we still have that would be. One that we need to get mowed and, uh, that is a class three. Uh, included in that is also the recycling center. That's kind of a, it's a pretty minimal piece. This is, this really doesn't have to get mowed terribly much. But this over here does get mowed pretty frequently. Uh, another one of the class three is the Scheffler House, but we would probably, um. That contractor, we would probably keep there. We really like that contractor that does that. Uh, and then three, we got this acreage right here. So this is the pickup line right here. Uh, and this whole area right here, which is, uh, later we'll talk about a garden, community garden proposal. That would go right here. Um, potentially. So, uh, and this is also held by the, well, there's, there's rights to it in the rail bank, those central Kansas land conservancy. So this is the group that does trails. So this is the group that does trails. Um, so there's some some things with that too, but we're, it doesn't really matter with mowing, but I just thought I'd bring that up because we did kind of mention that later on. Uh, the fourth one, we have the old hospital process uh property. So that needs to get cut, and we got a little bit of a. An oddball with the printer there. But that's about uh six, little over a half an acre there, two thirds of an acre. And we also had, uh, these are Willow Glen lots that we have to mow. So we got some of those there that we would need to, we could potentially mow out, have those bid out. Uh, five is is kind of the, is the museum area and the fairgrounds. So. Uh, we're gonna continue doing the pool and the sports complex area, but these are and also Memorial Field. Um, but this area around the fairgrounds is stuff that we take care of. Um, and so we would do that, and then also. The the property here at the at the museum. All the irrigated property at the park would continue to be done by city staff, Memorial Ballpark, city staff. The um pool area and then all the sports complex. And then the last one is just the airport property. Um, that's one that. That one doesn't need to be mowed all that much. Pretty, pretty interesting chunks out there. So. Um, those are, those are the six areas that we identified, and that's uh, that represents about half of what we mow. So there's, there's still a a pretty fair chunk that the city city guys mow, but. Uh, those are the ones we felt like we could get by with doing uh with the contractor. So. We've got the stack of of what we continue to mow. If anyone's really interested, it's a surprisingly large amount of of property that we know.
What about code enforcement mowing?
Code enforcement mowing is something that we could also do. Uh, we've, in the past, we've had a little bit of issue with people not necessarily wanting to do that. Um, because it does, it can be a little contentious. Um, and also you don't know what's out, and and when you're cutting a code enforcement lawn. It tends to be, it tends to be higher. And so there's, there's uh some unknowns with what you may run into there. So. Uh, we may play that by ear and see if we can do some of that, but we might end up doing that.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Stiles? Hearing none, I would accept a motion then to uh approve and give uh. Give uh the city administrator uh the ability to solicit bids. For mowing contractors for the eighty five identified acres in sections one through six. Somebody care to make that motion?
I will.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Garing seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries four oh. Um, we'll now move on to agenda item E nine, approval of job description, city clerk, sewer water trainee, front desk clerk, Mr. Stiles.
So this is kind of in continuation of our hiring that we're having to do. Uh, so we've just, we've already posted all these positions out, are seeking applications for these positions. Uh, city clerk. So we've updated the the job description for that, and then we also updated the. Uh, front desk clerk, which is one we previously had as as kind of a receptionist, and uh, so we've we've revamped that a little bit. Uh, the idea with everybody in the front office is that they would all be cross trained, and so they, it wouldn't necessarily have us regimented specific. As as it has been in the past. Uh, this person, we do want this front desk clerk to be working at the rec, uh, working with the rec stuff. That's something that. Has been mandated by our auditors that we have to have somebody handle that recreation stuff. It can't be Doug doing it. It's gotta be somebody else. So. Uh, having that rec thing, uh, also some being trained in court. That's one of the things that uh happens every month. Um, pretty, pretty easy. It, well, I wouldn't say it's an easy job, but it's it's one that doesn't take up a ton of time all the time. Um, so it's one of those things that we can kind of mash together with that. And then also, uh, just some general clerical things. So. At the end of the day, we're hoping to hire this, this person. Uh, Karen Funk's gonna continue with us, and then hiring the city clerk, I think that'll be. The three full-time people that we would have, and uh, we would potentially want to look at uh having somebody be a floater. To kind of help out when somebody's on vacation, that kind of thing. Uh, Steve Fast, the museum director, is helping us get over the hump right now. Um, and so he's gonna be, he's training on a lot of this stuff, and you know, could potentially be a floater for us in the future if that's something that works out. So. Uh, that's the front desk clerk, and then the other one is the um sewer and water trainee position. So this, we've combined those two departments. Uh, water, water and sewer going back together. Uh, and so this person would be somebody who's in line to to work in in the sewer side and the water side. Um, we've, I've been working with Morgan to kind of figure out what that transition looks like. So they're they're gonna start on the sewer side. Um, and after a year, well, they're gonna learn a lot of the sewer stuff, and then also move into the water stuff. But. After a year of experience, you can test for the sewer licensure, and then also you can test for the water licensure after you've worked a year. But they have to be independent of one another, so it gets a little weird with how they count time. But. Uh, the end goal is to be a certified operator in both sewer and water. Um, and so that's kind of how that position would work out. It's, it's structured in a way that if you hire somebody in. And then after they get their search, after they pass their preliminary time, we look at, you know, do we want to keep them? Then we give them a small raise. And then if we get to the point where they've passed their operator license, and we look at another kind of uh small, small raise, and we drop the trainee part, we give them a different title. Um, and as they go licensures, then then they receive uh additional. Either compensation or title is kind of how how the responsibilities work from there. So it's a pretty structured way that that moves forward. Uh, and they're based on those, um, based on those licensing. So those are the three we have. We want to get out there and get uh, uh. We've got those posted already, but I want to make sure before we hire anybody that we have good descriptions that have been approved. So.
Okay, any questions regarding the uh three job descriptions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the job descriptions as submitted.
I got motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Motion approved four zero. Uh, we'll now move on to agenda item E ten, Mr. Stiles.
Yes, this is, I'm not sure I got the right one. Uh, so Anthony Roy, our economic development officer, has also been doing. Uh, some code enforcement stuff for us, and uh, we're about to do a code enforcement action on a a property owner. Uh, it's. It it's in pretty bad shape, but when Anthony was talking with Susan Robson, our our new city prosecutor. We fi- we figured out that we need to have him uh or somebody appointed to the public officer in order to officially. Uh, submit that kind of code complaint. Uh, Ben Steckity, the previous, you know, the fire chief in code enforcement and building inspector. Uh, was acting under that role, but was never officially appointed to that role. So, um. We need to do some sort of official appointment, and Anthony's taken taken on some of that work. And so. Uh, we'd like to appoint him, or I'd ask you to appoint him so that we can continue on with some of these uh code enforcement actions.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'd ask the the for a motion to approve the appointment of Anthony Roy as public officer for the city of Hillsborough, Kansas.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Councilman Driggers. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries four oh. Uh, agenda item F, board appointments. There are no board appointments tonight other than the appointment that just made. Which was in a board appointment. So we'll move on to to uh item G, which is the city administrator's report, Mr. Stiles.
Okay, uh, okay. So we've kind of been going on through the hiring process. As as you all know, we're in that knee deep in that process. So. Uh, we have have looked at electrical supervisor position, did some interviewing and reference checks, and I've decided to promote Todd Helmer to the electrical supervisor role. I think Todd brings a lot of experience. Um, he does a lot of, he's the assistant fire chief as well. Uh, shown a lot of leadership over the years and a lot of um. Uh, the right attitude about approaching things from the city's perspective. So. Uh, we're happy to to welcome him aboard as the electrical supervisor, taking that promotion once Mike official, Mike Dirksen officially retires. Uh, which he was officially getting his day today. So I don't, I don't know what it is. It's probably waiting for me in my office, but. Um, so that's kind of how we, how we uh approached that. And one of the things that I kind of wanted to ask the council about was. Uh, so, uh, the way it's worked in the past is the city administrator acts as the personnel manager. Uh, the city code says that the the council really hires people that are appointed. Uh, it doesn't really say that you guys have much, much impact or influence on the employee hiring process. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page or what kind of, how you want to approach some of these positions, because we do have some pretty critical ones. Uh, the city clerk is the one that jumps out to me that, you know, I really would want everybody to be on board with, you know, and I, you know, I would invite Lou, and. If another council member wants to be a part of that interviewing process, I think that would be really important. But. I just want to make sure that the the I'm operating within the red, the the guardrails of what you want me to be operating in when we start doing this hiring. Is is it okay that, you know, basically I'm just bringing this to you like with Todd, uh, promotion? Um, it's technically a department head level position, but um, you know, what, how, how, how would you like me to handle that, I guess, is is what I'm asking?
Anybody on the council?
I personally don't have a problem with the city administrator taking care of some of them things on his own. As long as he lets us know what he did. He worked with it more than we do.
David?
I don't have any problem with it, with them doing it the way he's doing it. So.
Renee?
Yeah, I don't have any issues with that.
Okay, Brent?
I agree. I think this worked out just fine.
Um, I will advise the council that I did uh tell Mr. Stiles that uh we had actually already done our jobs. We hired him. We done our part. And uh, and so, no, I appreciate uh Matt that, you know, I, I think at this point. Uh, it's it's keeping the council advised and apprised. Uh, you know, and and you and I have discussed a little bit. The uh city clerk's position and and uh I think uh after, after. After some further thought about it, that I would like to have somebody from the council participate in the, in the interview process. I think it gets a little cumbersome. You know, if you have too big of, too big a group. But uh, uh, would somebody care to uh, on the council, care to volunteer to? Participate? If nobody volunteers, I'm gonna ask.
I I'll volunteer if he needs the help.
Okay. All right.
Who else wants to do it?
Okay.
I do think the police chief ought to be something we have something to do with too. Otherwise, I think the rest of them, I think Matt can do by himself.
Sure.
Okay, well, we're not officially looking, we're not looking for a police chief right now, so.
I know, but I.
When that comes, yeah, we'll for sure want to have that be a public kind of process.
Okay, well. And uh, you know, I think as we uh, as we uh narrow the field down, then then there probably would be appropriate to have. A final candidate or or two candidates, you know, meet the, meet the council, you know, in that process. It's. It's, that's a pretty important.
It's.
Position underneath the city administrator, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very important job that um, most people don't fully understand what goes on with it. Um, and so it's one of those things that we want to make sure we make a good hire decision there because it's a. It can really, it can really influence how how things go from an, from an operational perspective. So. Okay, so looking at some of the other things we've been up to, uh, aquatic center manager, Doug hired Cara Dool to serve as the next aquatic center manager. And Cara's got a ton of management experience uh with pools and uh has managed a lot of pools and recreations. Uh, at re- at recreation center and and um, she's done a lot of lifeguard instruction, lifeguarded herself. She's. She's kind of the ideal person that you'd want to have in that position. So. Uh, real happy to have her on board, and she's already kind of begun the process of of getting with uh, trying to find some assistant pool managers, which is, there's two of those. And lifeguards and pool staffs. Uh, so we're gearing up like we're gonna open the pool, and I think that right now, unless something dramatic changes. I think we'll be in in a position where we can do that safely. Uh, we'll, we'll need to look at kind of what the COVID protocols would be, what we would need to do. But um, I think that we can kind of look at that, and I, right now, we're planning on doing it. So. Uh, I'm not sure what it'll look like exactly, but that's, that's what we're gonna plan for. So. Uh, on the other hiring stuff, right now, we've got the superintendent, the city clerk in the trainee position, water sewer trainee position that you guys approved open. Uh, we added the front desk clerk position this week. So, uh, been getting pretty good, pretty good applications, or a good number of applications, I guess. Uh, for the clerk's position, couple for the golf superintendent, and I think I have one right now for the water sewer trainee. So. Um, starting to get some applications rolling in, and we'll, we'll start looking at that. We're looking at March twelfth is kind of the first day that we are. Going to um. Start interviewing or reviewing those applications. So, uh, a couple more weeks. So if you know anybody who's interested in any of those positions, they can get their stuff on. Uh, we've got them all online, so you can kind of look at the, look at all the information about those. Uh, with the city clerk and the golf superintendent, we're asking for a resume and a letter of interest, not necessarily the application. Uh, the other ones were just taking applications. They don't have to have resumes uh for that. So, um, that's kind of where we're at on it. That process continues. Uh, EMS building. So Ben and I met with Darren, who was here earlier. I talked a little bit about that. There's. There's a few issues with that property in general that we're gonna need to address. Um, it it has to do with the plating of the property and kind of how it's, everything's. Been done in the past when they tried to go back and clean up the plaques. Uh, the county tried to do that back in the nineties and. Uh, may or may not have made us some interesting decisions, I guess, is what I would say with AMPI. So we're probably gonna have to look at a replat of that at some point in the future, but we feel like we can carve out what we need for the EMS. Uh, right now and still be within our guidelines. So. Uh, community garden proposal. We got a proposal from Stan Teason about uh community garden. Actually, a really well thought out community garden proposal. I didn't include it in the packet because we're still kind of working through some of that, but. Um, so we're, we're looking at that, and I mentioned it before. It's the property right by. Uh, south of the pickup line and and kind of to the west there. Um. There's, there's a little bit of a hitch there. The conservancy has some rights to that. Uh, generally speaking, they're pretty good about letting you do things that aren't permanent structures there. A garden obviously isn't a permanent structure, but uh, we're trying to sort out some of that area right there. The the railroad right of way that they have title to. Got really big right there and between Main Street and and kind of west to the, to the green elevator. It gets really wide, but. Uh, the railroad company, before they transitioned it to the land bank, sold some of it. So we're trying to figure out what exactly it looks like there. So. We're working through that, and there there are some other things that come out of that, uh, that come from that. So. The next phase with the community garden will kind of be to go out to the community and ask, you know, who's, who's interested? Is it something that? Uh, people would want to jump in and do. So Stan's actually volunteered to to kind of do some of that, and you know, more power to him. If we can make it work, let's, let's make it work. A couple other things I wanted to get to you. They started to work on the trail over there by the hospital. They're out there working. Uh, they started work yesterday. Uh, they're tearing out the old railroad bridge today. I, I didn't get any pictures of it. Um. The weather is good. They should be completed in May. It's a pretty short timeline for that project. Uh, and then they're gonna flip right around and do the highway work uh at the same time. So they're gonna start that on the fifteenth, and that should be completed sometime in the summer. Uh, the real trick with that's gonna be managing countryside's expansion at the same time. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, it should be, should be interesting.
Who's doing that?
Uh, Andale Construction, well, Andale Paving, uh, out of, out of Wichita, at Andale. So, um.
Can you say that again? They'll do the trail first and then they'll move to the highway?
Yeah, they're starting on the trail now. So they started March first on the trail, yesterday on the trail.
It'll be done by when?
Uh, the middle, sometime in May.
Okay.
Wasn't it forty five days?
It's thirty five working days. It's a real short project, so.
Okay, so the trail would be operational late spring.
Yep, should be, yep. That'll be, that'll be a really nice addition right in time for summer. So it'll be great. Um, and then on March fifteenth. Um, and then on March fifteenth is their official start date for the highway project, so they're gonna be kind of bouncing back and forth, it sounds like, but um, yeah, well, well, that should be completed sometime in June. That one had a sixty-five day window, um, so it's a little bit longer project. Uh, let's see, we had the youth entrepreneurship challenge today, uh, EDHDC, um, runs that through, it's a Network Kansas thing, but it's a uh, a competition for youth entrepreneurs. The high school students bring that. They had six competitors, uh, all from Hillsborough this year, so Hillsborough won, good for us. Uh, and so we had uh, high school students there doing that. Uh, Tabor students actually came out, too, and and helped with some of the judging and did some of the people's choice stuff. Uh, the winner this year was Jessie Dolkey, uh, so she won for her photography business, so uh, it's actually really cool. I went over there and I I participated, too, and did a walk-around, talked to all of them. I think we've got some really impressive uh, high school students with some really cool business ideas, and I hope that the, I hope they stick with it. I think there's some that could really turn into something for us, so. Uh, really cool. I love that event. It's been one of the participators. Uh, and then I also want to let everybody know that we, we've sent some volunteers to help with the point of distribution stuff, uh, the shop clinics, the vaccine shop clinics. Um, so I I went and volunteered last Wednesday, and then Todd Simmons came in and from the water department and volunteered that afternoon. Uh, so we've been offering our help when they, when they need it, if they need it. Uh, I think it's a community effort to get people vaccinated, and so you know, if we can help out, it can spare some people for four-hour stretches. That's not a big deal, so. Um, we're helping out with that where we needed, and we'll continue to do that as asked, so that that is everything I have, I promise.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Stiles? Uh, if not, we will move on to uh, item H, which is council comments, and I will just go around and and uh, and ask each council member if you have anything you'd like to uh, bring up, and we'll go from there. Councilman McCarty?
I have nothing.
Councilman Driggers?
Not today.
Councilman Garing?
No, I don't think I have anything today.
Councilman Lowen?
Nope, not today.
Okay, well, just remember, we're gonna continue to uh, to call on you each meeting, and and uh, you know, I encourage you that you, if you have a constituent uh, uh, comment or or uh, or anything like that that you'd like to share, you know, now that would be the time to do it if it isn't fitting into some other part of the agenda, so. Want to make sure that uh, we give as many opportunities for input from, from the community and uh, vis-à-vis their elected representatives, so. We'll continue to do this in the future. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, we will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for your attendance.